Good evening. Welcome to the Chandler City Council Study Session of Monday, March 19th. Want to welcome everybody to the study session. The first order of business this evening, council, is scheduled public appearances. I would ask Councilmember Rowe to join me out front of the dais. Got a lot of good scheduled public appearances this evening. And we will start that with our service recognition. We have five employees tonight receiving awards representing four different city departments. I'd like to ask City Manager Marsha Reed to begin the presentations.
Thank you, Mayor. I would ask Derek Korn, our Acting Development Services Director, to come forward and make his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Tip Schreiner and members of the city council. Kathy Flores began her career with the City of Chandler in March 2008 as an accounting specialist in the Management Services Department. Kathy handled accounts receivable and was responsible for creating invoices. In 2016, Kathy was promoted to Senior Administrative Assistant in Transportation and Development. In this role, she worked closely with administrative staff in the daily operations of that department. During her time with TND, Kathy was honored at a quarterly values luncheon for upholding Chandler's values. In September 2017, organization changes led to Kathy to the duly-created Development Services Department. She now performs duties that support the administration of that department. In her spare time, Kathy enjoys going to church and spending time with her husband and two daughters. Kathy is an asset to the City of Chandler with the dedication and hard work over the last 10 years. Kathy, congratulations and thank you.
My husband's here, Ephraim Albert Flores, and my daughter Amanda Flores.
Thank you.
I would ask Fire Chief Tom Dugan to come forward and make his presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'd like to ask Engineer Travis McBurney to come up. Honored tonight to recognize Engineer Travis McBurney for 20 years of dedicated service to the City of Chandler. Travis began his career as a Chandler firefighter in 1998. He was certified as a paramedic in 2001 and promoted to engineer in 2006. Travis currently serves as the engineer at Fire Station 4. Along with the duties of being an engineer, Travis is also a member of the department's special operations team where he serves as a hazardous materials technician. Outside of work, Travis serves both the department and the region as a member of the Chandler Fire Pipes and Drums Team. He has participated in numerous local and state events and represented the state of Arizona at the National Fallen Firefighter Memorial in Colorado. In closing, Travis is a valued member of our city and his service to the Chandler community is appreciated. Travis, on behalf of the department, we congratulate you on 20 years of service and look forward to many more. I'd now like to call up firefighter Rob Wayante. Please join me in recognizing firefighter Rob Wayante for 20 years of service to the City of Chandler. Rob began his career as a Chandler firefighter in 1998. He was certified as an emergency paramedic in 2001 and is currently assigned to Fire Station 5 in South Chandler. In his 20 years of service, Rob has served as a wildland firefighter, founding member of the department's honor guard, and training preceptor for paramedic students. In 2017, Rob was awarded the department's Paramedic of the Year based on his professionalism and dedication to emergency medical services. Rob is considered a leader amongst his peers. His 20 years of experience have proven to be an asset during complex emergency incidents. He is a highly sought-after mentor within the department and has been instrumental in developing young firefighters. Rob, on behalf of the department, we congratulate you on 20 years of dedicated service to the City of Chandler.
I would ask Sean Duggan, our police chief, to come forward and make his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to ask Dave Austin to come forward in recognition of his 30 years of service with the City of Chandler. So Dave began his career in law enforcement over three decades ago when he joined the Maricopa County Sheriff's Department as a detention officer. And after four years there, he began to explore other opportunities in law enforcement which brought him here to Chandler. So he started with Chandler PD back in 1988 as a patrol officer and immediately gained a reputation as a hard-working officer who was dedicated to his role as a public servant. And while in patrol, Dave also served as a crime scene officer before moving to detectives, where he spent the next five years. After serving in property crimes, specializing in arson investigations, and then later in persons crimes, Dave was promoted to sergeant, a role he has served in for almost 20 years. And as a sergeant, Dave has served in patrol, administration, professional standards unit, and the Criminal Investigations Bureau. Throughout his career, Dave has been recognized for his hard work and contributions to law enforcement with two-unit citations, three exceptional merit awards, and multiple commendations from staff and from the community. Dave, congratulations on your 30-plus years of service in our profession and to our city. Thank you for your leadership and for helping to shape the culture of our department. And as a bittersweet note, Dave is retiring in just a few weeks, so congratulations on an incredible career.
I would ask John Knutson to come forward and make the presentation for Public Works and Utilities.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'd like to ask Jack and his mother Lydia to come forward to receive Lydia's 25-Year Lydia began her career at the City of Chandler in March of 1993, and over the past 25 years has worked as a purchasing assistant, senior accounting specialist, and now serves as a valuable role as a project support assistant in the Capital Projects Group within the Public Works and Utilities Department. Lydia has contributed her knowledge and experience in helping the division achieve its goal to provide excellent customer service and the delivery of capital projects for the city. Lydia is the go-to person for anyone seeking assistance on financial issues related to city projects. Lydia embodies Chandler values and demonstrates them in all that she does. Thank you, Lydia, for 25 years of service.
Of the service recognition?
Yes, Mayor.
Next item is retirement recognition. I'd like to ask City Manager to begin the presentation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would ask Deborah Stapleton, our Administrative Services Director, to come forward and make this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'd like to invite Maria Melny up for her 20-year service award. Please join me in recognizing Maria for her 20 years of service with the City of Chandler. Maria began her career with the city in an administrative support two position with the Management Services Department. Maria spent nine years in this role before transferring to the Information Technology Division. Over the last 11 years in IT, Maria's role has evolved from greeting visitors and receiving shipments and answering phones to include managing the city's phone billings, maintaining the city's phone book, managing purchasing card transactions, and processing order and payments. Maria is the first point of contact for all building issues within IT. She always has a smile on her face and always willing to help others. She welcomes new challenges and has developed processes to streamline her workload. On behalf of Administrative Services, IT, and on behalf of Steve Filbrick, who couldn't make it today, I'm sorry to say that he couldn't make it, I want to thank you for your 20 years of dedicated service to the city and especially all you do for us in IT. Thank you, Maria. And Maria will also be retiring pretty soon, right? Yeah, maybe you'll be back for your retirement recognition.
How about retirement recognition? That was it? Deb said she's coming back for that. She'll come back next month. Okay, next item is purchasing award. Ask Management Service Don Lang to begin the presentation. Don?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'd like to ask our great, but, or, I'm sorry, purchasing team to come forward to accept this recognition. So many of you know that it's St. Patrick's Day is also in the month of March, but did you also know that the month of March is National Purchasing Month? It's very exciting. Tonight, I have the honor of recognizing the city's purchasing team for receiving the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award for 2017 from the National Purchasing Institute. This distinguished award recognizes organizational excellence by measuring an agency's commitment to continuous improvement in such areas as innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership. The city's received this award for 13 consecutive years. Here with us this evening, we have Christina Pryor, the Purchasing and Materials Manager; we have Mike Mant, Raquel McMahon; Carol Lee Stees, procurement officers, as well as a junior procurement officer, Sophie; and we have Jose Tapia, our supply supervisor. We also have Juan, who could not be here this evening, but Sophie has decided to step in for him, so that was very nice. Chandler's purchasing division belongs to an elite group of purchasing organizations in government that operate with the highest standards of quality and efficiency. My thanks and appreciation to the purchasing team for their commitment and dedication to their profession, the city, and the community. Thank you.
Okay, next scheduled public appearance is a proclamation for Pastor Jose Gonzalez. At this time, I would like to ask Pastor Jose Gonzalez and any of his family or friends Okay. Got a basketball team here. Final four. Okay, nice to see you. Thank you, Pastor, for bringing your family and friends with you tonight. I have a proclamation we want to read for you first. Whereas Pastor Jose Gonzalez has served as lead pastor of the Chandler Free Methodist Church for the past 38 years, and whereas Pastor Gonzalez founded the Light and Life Day Labor Center in 2003, and whereas more than 200,000 day laborers and 30,000 members of the community have used the services provided by the Day Labor Center since it opened, and whereas Pastor Gonzalez generously donated more than 2,000 hours of volunteer time this year and more than 28,000 hours since the Day Labor Center opened its doors, and whereas for all of his compassionate work in the Chandler community, we wish him the very best in his retirement. Now therefore, I, J. Tip Schreiner, do hereby proclaim March 19th, 2018, as Pastor Jose Gonzalez Day in Chandler, Arizona. We'll take a photo and then ask Pastor and David if any of you want to speak. And Pastor Gonzalez.
I've always said it's not a good idea to give a pastor the microphone. I want you to know I'm used to picking up an offering after I speak.
But tonight, I just want to say that I want to give God thanks, I want to give my family thanks, and I want to give the City of Chandler thanks. And I just want to share with you that serving the community is not the sole privilege of a pastor. We can all do that.
Gracias, Dios lo bendiga.
Thank you and God bless you.
Next scheduled public appearance this evening, council, is Martin Supoboda, City of Chandler election. Martin, we get your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Martin Supoboda, 891 North Madrid Lane, Chandler, 85226. Mayor and council, I'd like to revisit the voter disparity issue we talked about two weeks ago. On Friday, I spoke with the clerk and asked if anyone on the council had spoken regarding this issue, and at that time, 4:15, 4:30, no one had called in the issue. So Mayor, I know you and the vice mayor are going to be going to partisan elections very soon, so I'll direct my comments to the balance of the council. Councilmember Wong and Stewart, you're new on the body, you're perhaps a bit new in the community, and I'm not sure if you knew about the disparity of our elections prior to taking office, but I certainly hope that we can work forward with a solution. My remarks are going to be short. They're not meant to disparage anybody or browbeat anybody, but I think they're necessary. Councilman Lopez, you took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States when you became a naval officer. That's something I'm sure you're very proud of. I did it a lot longer than you did, and I'm still proud of that. You know, as you know, our constitution guarantees Americans equal treatment, access to the polls. One thing I'll always remember when I was deployed overseas during election season, guess what I got in the mail? A ballot. Councilmember Rowe swore an oath to protect and serve your community when you became a police officer. All of these swore an oath to protect, to serve this community when you were elected, your oath of office. Councilmember Hartke, you're a pastor and a director of a nonprofit corporation. Part of your mission is to serve and advocate for those economically less fortunate. Your mission statement is fair and equal access to social services. I guess my question to you would be, in Chandler's nonpartisan elections, is it important to you that all Chandler voters get treated fairly?
Martin, I'm going to have you make your presentation, and then if he wants, he can respond to any questions you have after you're done.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Well, that's a question. It's the second question I had for everybody. If it's an issue of cost or budget, let's talk about it. And I guess the third question I would have for, again, Mr. Hartke, other than the mayor, you've served in this council the longest amount of time, and I would hope in that 10 years, this becomes a priority moving forward. So I'll just close with this. In the next couple of weeks, I'll draft a plan and send it to the clerk and hopefully get some input. I would really like to work with everybody in this council to look at a solution that we can overcome this disparity in our voter issue, or voter, the voter registration and how we get to actually ask for ballots. That's what we don't want to do, or I think we want to have equal access. So my hopes is we can overcome this, hope that we all work together. So I'd be happy to.
And repeat the first question.
The first question?
Yes.
Is it important to Mr. Hartke to have equal treatment for all voters in Chandler in our nonpartisan elections?
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
No response? Okay. Well, you know where I live? If you have my phone number, I'd like to talk with you. Thank you.
So, Clark, could you give the process for voters in Chandler to receive a ballot?
Mayor Tip Schreiner, members of the council, yes. To talk about, a little bit about the process, we first kind of start 90 days out. All voters who are on the permanent early voting list are mailed a postcard. So it kind of starts with that permanent early voting list. There are two types of postcards that are mailed out. One type is mailed to all registered Republicans or Democrats. In that postcard, it tells them that there's an upcoming election, and it tells them that they'll be mailed a ballot if they want to. If they don't want to receive a ballot, then they put that on their postcard and send that back in. So if they're on that permanent early voting list, they automatically receive a ballot unless they say they don't want one. There's a second postcard that is mailed out, and those are mailed out to the people on the permanent early voting list who are registered as independent or no party preference. That also indicates there's an upcoming election, but it allows them to pick a party ballot that they want to receive, and this isn't a primary election. So they can pick, if they want a ballot, a Republican ballot that also has the city issues on it, or if they want a Democrat ballot that also has the city issues. They indicate if they want a Republican ballot, a Democrat ballot, or if they only want a city-only ballot. They indicate that on the postcard, send that back into the county, and then they're automatically mailed a ballot. So everyone who's on that permanent early voting list will receive a postcard. It's just that if you're not registered with a party, you have to pick which postcard you receive, and then that ballot's mailed to you. And then 11 days before the actual election, for those people who were not mailed an early ballot, of course, you can request an early ballot even if you're not on the early voting list. For those people who have not requested an early ballot, or those people who already received one through the permanent early voting list, will be mailed a sample ballot telling them that the election is upcoming, where they can go to vote at the polls, and then at the polls, if they're not registered with a party, they can pick if they want a Republican, Democrat, or city-only ballot. So there is notification to all registered voters about picking a ballot if you're not registered with a party.
Council, any questions, comments?
Yeah, so if nobody responds to, if it's an independent that does not respond to that saying either Democrat, Republican, or city-only, do they still get a ballot? Or if there's no returned postcard, do they get nothing?
No. If they don't respond, they won't get a ballot because the county doesn't know what ballot they want. They can't just automatically assume that they're going to get a Republican ballot or want a Republican ballot, so if they don't pick a ballot...
But it would default to city-only then?
No. They'd have to select city-only. That's...
Councilmember Hartke. So with that last statement, everyone has the option of requesting, if they're on the permanent early ballot list, everyone has the option of requesting either Republican, Democrat, or city ballot with the Secretary of State, and if they request, they're sent one, correct? Is what you just said?
Yes. Councilmember Hartke, through the mayor, yes. It's actually requested through the county, Maricopa County. But yes, they have the option of requesting either of those ballots, and then they'll be sent a ballot. Even if they're not on the permanent early voting list, they can call, if they call up and say, "I want an early ballot mailed to me," they can request that, and it will be mailed.
And the, I know we used to do a, before we entered the consolidated ballot, we, at one point, did our own in which people just received if they were, if they were a registered voter, the opportunity, but what's the, what's the number, the percentage of voters like in the last election and the last time that we did a, our own consolidated election?
Councilmember Hartke, so for the November, well, we can go with the primary, for August 30th, 2016, primary election, there was a City of Chandler 22% turnout? Is that what you're talking about? Is the turnout...
Sure, of the, this last one?
Yes, in August of 2016.
And the general?
General was 46%.
Of the, of 2016 or...
Of 2016, I'm sorry. Yes. So in 2016, the voter turnout for the City of Chandler was 46%.
And how many, was that the voted in the Chandler vote or voted or had opportunity to vote in general? What were those numbers that just voted?
The turnout for the City of Chandler election was 46%. The turnout for countywide was 78%.
So those were Chandler voters that had a chance to vote, 78% at the last election?
Yes.
And before we went to a consolidated election, what was the last primary and general vote on that one?
The last primary was March 14th. The last primary was March 14 of 2016, or 2006, and the turnout was 16%. And the general, the turnout was 12% for the city election.
Okay. So 12% opposed to 78% when we went to a consolidated and everyone received a ballot who wanted one, who could vote. Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
Councilmember Rowe, then Councilmember Stewart.
Dan, I'm sorry we keep coming to you.
No, that's okay.
Let's talk just a little bit about voting in the City of Chandler because the City Clerk's Office actually does run voting right here. If somebody wanted to come and vote leading up to a primary or a general election, they could come in. Can they vote a provisional ballot, or do they need to, or how does that?
Yes, so Councilmember Rowe through the mayor. The City of Chandler is an early voting site or a site on Election Day that's open for voters to come in, like they call them vote centers now. And yes, a citizen can come in. If they're not registered with a party, they can pick which ballot they want, and they'll get the ballot. If they have to do a provisional ballot, that can be done at the city hall also. So they are able to vote the City of Chandler election here at City Hall.
Okay, terrific. And so Chandler does that, and that's kind of, we're not required to do that?
No, we're not required to be an early voting site, but we do.
Is that kind of the same thing every other city is doing?
A lot of cities have it in their city halls. I know some might not have it at City Hall, but another city facility, we have a nice city hall to be able to do that, so we offer that.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Sepulveda, for bringing this issue to our attention. I've got a three-part question, but it kind of moves around, so stay with me here. The question I've got for you is, on the early voter list, who handles sort of the, who's the depository of that? Is that the Secretary of State?
Councilmember Stewart, that's Maricopa County Recorder.
The Maricopa County Recorder handles that. So do you know currently, we've got a new Maricopa County Recorder, is there a push to move more people to a mail-in ballot? And will that be sent to everybody? Is there, I've heard rumblings of that.
Councilmember Stewart, right now, if you have a consolidated election, they don't have the option to have an all-mail ballot. If it's a consolidated election with, with the county and the state issues, they're not able to do all-mail ballot. The only way we could do all-mail ballot is if we were separate from.
We could choose to do that as a city if we, if it made sense, right?
We would have to choose to administer our own election, yes. So we would have to mail out the ballots, receive them.
Have you done that before?
I don't know that the City of Chandler has done that in the past.
Okay. If you, so we've done city-only ballots in the past, correct?
We've done city-only ballots.
Okay.
When we weren't consolidated.
Understood. And then, so, so the question here that I guess that, that citizen has presented is that we may have not, we may not be giving opportunity to people that want to do mail-in ballots in the City of Chandler. If you, as, I'm not an expert at this, but as clerk, have you seen a policy or a situation in another city where it's been done differently? Or what would you do if you wanted to increase voter turnout?
Councilmember Stewart, I think there are studies that all-mail ballots do increase voter turnout. I don't know, I don't know the percentages and that. As far as, as far as running an election the way that we have been doing it, I think voter education is a really good way to increase voter turnout, especially, you know, letting people who are not registered with a party know how they can get a ballot, especially in the primary. We don't, you don't have this issue in the general because it's a nonpartisan ballot. It really only is an issue in the primary election. So I think the way we're doing it, a lot more voter education, another notice maybe to go out to, instead of just the 90-day and the 11-day, you could send another notice, things like that.
Thank you. I haven't hit my question a minute.
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor. Councilmember Hartke. So if there was opportunity, that would be something we could introduce, for example, in a water bill? That would be a cost-effective way without, I mean, everyone who is a resident, either online or through paper, gets a copy of that, and that could be a relevant source. One other question. When we went to consolidated vote that Councilmember Stewart was talking about, what was the percentage of the citizens that actually went that way that asked us to go to consolidated voting?
In 2015, we actually did a charter amendment that formalized the City of Chandler holding elections in August and November. And that charter amendment was put on the ballot. There was a, the vote itself, there were 22,240 votes. 21,227 people voted for the proposition to approve the charter amendment, and 1,979 voted against it. So it was a.
So 90, 95% of those who voted at that voted to join the consolidated election?
That's correct.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, Council, we do have an agenda for Thursday evening. And I do want to remind all the council also that we have, we have a reconvene the executive session on the fifth floor conference room after we're done here. Any comments on the consent agenda from council tonight? Okay, with that, we will adjourn the study session.